Good afternoon. Today is October ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is now one thirty P. M. I'm Kevin Day, Chair of the Custer County Board of Commissioners. I will call this meeting to order. If you could join us for the pledge and for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, and we just ask that as we meet here now that you would be with us. We ask for your guidance, for your direction. We ask this in Jesus' name. Okay. Kelly, could we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Day.
President.
Commissioner Canada.
Air.
Commissioner F.
President.
Name clerk to the board, Kelly Camper, President.
Okay, and we have one person in the audience here. If you could introduce yourself for the record, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Robin Canapi, Emergency Management Director.
All right. And any amendments to the agenda?
None.
None. No unfinished business. We have new business, one item, and that would be the emergency management grant. And so if we could go to there. Bill, do you want that first, or do you want Robin here?
I'll point out up front here is that this grant came up. That's the last minute problem. I'll explain why. But it's a grant that has several pieces that are in work. So we need it. And she'll play the stats. I don't know whether we're going to be able to complete it yet today. So we'll let her take it from there. This is a discussion on the grant to decide whether we submit it, submit it or not.
Overall, this is the forest mitigation grant season. I don't know why they make it all at the same time, but it seems like. So we got the grant application on the twenty-sixth of September, and we're looking at a number of components. And the one that was most interesting was the capacity building projects. And this is under Forest Restoration and Wildlife, wildfire risk mitigation grant program. And this application does require a fifty percent match. And so that's why it was really important that you all understand what the grant is, what it can do, and
How much?
And how much, and how, how, how much approval, and whether this is the right time for that. It's a fairly lengthy application where we have to put in layers for our wildfire urban interface and include a map that also has to do with our S. V. I., which is the social vulnerability. And if we were able to qualify for that, the grant match would go down to twenty-five percent. But I think I reported on that another month, that we meet some of the indicators of the S. V. I., but we don't meet enough for a full qualification, even though we have a lot of folks who are over sixty. We have poverty level, a percentage of disabled, and we know lots of veterans. It doesn't meet all those qualifications that allow us to have a smaller piece of the grant. So it has to meet certain themes like living with wildfire, watershed protection, and then local actions. And that's where, as we continue to grow the mitigation program, we want to be able to provide as many services for and with local residents and neighborhoods. We launched the Neighborhood Ambassador Program with the Colorado State Outreach Grant. We now have six neighborhoods that are participating and have six ambassadors on board. There's another training this fall. So our goal is to get those ambassadors engaged. So we have a point person in each neighborhood. And we're starting with the HOAs because they have a structure and then they have a way oftentimes to communicate with their residents. So we're real happy that we're making good progress on that. And one of the things that's happening is there's been, been homeowner questions about, well, what can we help with? So we started with home assessment. So we go out to the property. We look at their home and their property and talk about how is their house situated and what they can do to help themselves to get their house more protectable from fire and then move out thirty feet and a hundred feet. So we've been doing those for a couple of months. And then it has come to our attention that they really could use additional resources. So, for example, one gentleman, I went to his house, he had a really small trailer. So he got the chainsawing, and then he would take those little, you know, branches over to landfill. So he could only do so much at once where he had lots of property. So that and another neighborhood is renting a chipper and going to Canyon City and getting a chipper. And so they are also putting in for this grant as a neighborhood for mitigation work as a project, not for the same thing we are, not for chipper. But that would just, you know, defray the cost from the neighborhood having to go rent a chipper, which is about five hundred dollars a day, plus fuel. The closest one is Canyon City. And my experience working with the first project back in May is they went over there, picked it up, brought it back, and it had a log stuck in it, so it wouldn't work. They take it back, and so they lost about four hours of work just because of that, and then brought it back and it was fine. So we did reach out to which seems to be the, the most popular dealer, and that is Vermeer. And they're down in Florence.
So what are you going to manage?
So this is, this is an equipment grant. It's called capacity building. So that would be capacity for the county to go out and provide capacity to the neighborhoods with a chipper. And this is a great way to get rid of the slash. It does not end up in the landfill. It does not end up being
So for gardens.
Sitting around. Actually, that's one of the things we have to do is reach out and make sure that we're not, you know, taking away somebody's business. So reaching out to those woody contractors to, to get that. Yeah, the, the way that we see that happening is that our mitigation staff or volunteers that have been trained on safely using a chipper would perform, one, a safety orientation every single time, and then also make sure that everybody's wearing their P. P. E. and the safety glasses, ear protection, and, you know, all the other things that they need. So that idea was to loan that to the neighborhoods and have, there's a couple of models. One, they can bring all their slash to collection points. Or you can schedule times, nine-thirty, ten o'clock, ten-thirty, going around to the different residents. It stimulates the homeowners to do the work for themselves and then just to pull that slash to the road because that's the most difficult portion, is getting rid of that, the slash, and it really does add up.
So question on that. To make sure I heard correctly, you're going to have your staff train people when they get ready to use it. Who is actually going to be operating that chipper?
Well, what, what I've seen so far is a two-person team at the back of the chipper. So that one person's kind of handing the other person that slash, and they, they go slow. I mean, there's no reason to be going really fast. And so
It's a homeowner.
But the, the question is, yeah, who? Is it, is it the individuals in the subdivision, or is it someone that is going with that equipment? And they're, they are dedicated operators, volunteers, or whatever?
No, the, the preference is that we have a dedicated person going with the chipper.
Because
County employee?
County employee or a trained volunteer. We now have eleven mitigation volunteers that have been trained on chainsaws. So that's a pretty big safety-oriented position. So if they can run a chainsaw, they probably can run a chipper. So we train them on that because this is going to be a weekend kind of thing.
Yeah. The reason for my question is I see a pretty good liability if just, well, now this, this H. O. A. over here now wants to use, so they come and hook onto the chipper, and now they're taking it in. Who is actually going to be running that? We don't, we don't want, we need the accountability on that because that, that's not, that, that is a, by its design, it's inherently a dangerous piece of equipment. So you don't want just anybody in the, in the H. O. A. running a chipper that falls under Custer County, is what I'm saying. If they're going to go down and rent one, that's on them. But if it's our chipper that we're supplying, I, I would want to make sure that we have somebody on there that's
What?
Not going to disable the, the kill bar and try to reach in there and grab a branch or something that's crossways and then get chipped.
No, absolutely. Safety's got to be paramount with the chainsaw, crew, and the shipping crew. So I totally agree, Kevin. Safety would be really important.
Go ahead. I didn't mean to derail the
Oh, that's okay. So, you know, the chipper itself is, you want something that's of good quality, commercial grade, because they are finicky and they do, you know, get those logs stuck in there at times. So making sure that we have a good quality product. That's why we went with the Vermeer, which is, it's V. E. R. M. E. E. R. And I'll start passing around the sales quote. As far as size, the way the, the roller or the intake into the chipper works is either a single or a two-wheel roller. Obviously, the, the two-roller is a little bit more safe. The one-roller, you know, it just kind of takes it, but the two-roller slows it down. And so the
Same company?
Yes.
Different size machines?
Yes. So the B. C. one thousand is the smaller machine, and it has the, the one-roller. And the B. C. fifteen hundred is the larger machine.
Ten to two, man. I want the big one.
Well, you know, it's more all-around. It's more gas. But it also is not just twelve inches. The twelve inches of, you know, going in, the feed, yes, doesn't allow as many, like, branches to go in.
So that's the, the smaller one?
Yeah, the smaller model is twelve inches, and then there's approximately three inches more on the larger model.
So it's fifteen.
Yeah, I understand it. The, probably the biggest thing for maintenance is regular maintenance. The grant would like to know, you know, past the grant period, which is four years, what are we going to do with the machine? And so if we have a quality maintenance program, it'll last longer. So I have talked to Vince at Road and Bridge, and they do their own maintenance. So even though we have a maintenance package quote, which includes the oil changes, filter changes, belt checks, and blade checks, he would, he could do it all, of course, you know, he'd have a task in which, you know, too many more things. He's got a lot to do anyway. But he, Dan's worked on these before, and about two hundred and fifty hours or so on the blades and the, the oil change. So because we probably are only chipping five months of the year, unless we get, you know, more Indian lumber like now, but that would be probably once a season. And you do have to sharpen the blades and send them off or find a qualified sharpener because they're very exact. So the two quotes, although you probably can take the maintenance off of there, you see it's the bottom line. There's still the delivery charge, the freight charge, about three, three to four thousand dollars, I think. Yeah. So we still have that freight charge to get it here from the manufacturer.
Bottom line quote had freight charge on it?
Mm-hmm. On the very bottom, it says shipping charges. So it would be, I need to see it back with the exact figures.
Sixty-five, eighty percent.
Oh, you got it? Okay. Yeah.
Ninety-eight percent.
Yeah. So, yeah, ninety-three. Yeah, ninety-three thousand. Or sixteen-one thousand.
Let's see if those quotes came out of Florence.
If I said Florence, I meant Penrose.
So it's true value in Penrose?
Yeah. I might have said Florence.
I believe so, but that's our
Okay.
And they're the closest dealer. They have them one in colors and things, I believe, so. And the larger unit, they did give us a four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollar discount. The dealer recommendation is the larger one, and the smaller one would be similar to what Road and Bridge has. They have the B. C. nine hundred.
So what are the issues now on the grant? What, what timeline? What do we miss? And how can we still make it, and if we don't get until tomorrow?
The deadline is tomorrow at five P. M. And we have the quotes. Bernie helped me do the map, and so we'll embed that after this is done. We have to embed that map. It's a requirement. We're reaching out to those other vendors, those wood product vendors. And what our plan is, is to, not the slash, but the actual logs, is to give that to the Firewood Bank. And that is a grant that is being submitted by a nonprofit that we're partnering with. So what will be another result of this is memorandum of understanding with Custer County and Veterans Rescue Ranch, where they will store the wood and then apply for the Firewood Grant. And then we would assist with volunteers who are on our mitigation team, go split the wood. So the hope is that they get that grant and they have a splitter. So we've already collected some logs, and then they will store them. They have to have a moisture meter. So it has to be cured to a certain moisture level because you don't want to give anyone green wood and just smoke up their house. But this is in concert with the B. S. O. and Carmel and providing firewood to our veterans, two cords per, per year when we first start with the maximum.
There's already logs on the ground there, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
A hundred that came out of our training. So we each cut down about seven, ten trees, yeah. But they have to have a covered area. And so they'll be looking
Veterans would be doing that?
Veterans and the mitigation volunteers. And just by the way, as far as being dangerous, the, this has been cleared all through D. T. S. I. And Bob and I have a written statement from them that this is a covered volunteer activity for working's comp. Not that we, you know, want that to happen. We'll do everything to make sure they're safe. So, but that
So, so what's the other issue? So then you're waiting for something to be done?
Oh, that was the sales quote. Yes, for, so that I could meet with you guys in early afternoon. So I had the actual figures in front of me. He thought he might be able to get it down a little bit less on the larger unit. And so he hasn't had a chance. The salesperson
Two to four percent or so.
Talked to his boss. So that's still not out of the possibility that we could get a further discount.
Could I see those again?
Sure.
Thank you.
Essentially, you're asking for fifty thousand dollars from the general funds, cash reserves?
That's, oh, that's
This is reimbursable, or this could match?
I do need a letter of support today. And it's possible we don't get it.
All right, because we still have to file.
Well, the, this grant goes to, yeah, it is a really good team, definitely. This grant goes to Colorado State Forest Service Regional Office in Canyon City. And their forester has just retired John Greve. But his supervisor, I talked to earlier this week, and he says a, although out of the millions that are in this grant, twenty-five percent can go towards capacity building and equipment. Derek, he's, he's a supervisor, so he's at the, at the district level. I don't know if that's regional. He's a younger guy. I've met him a couple of times, and he's like this college, you know, beneath that, and so
Just fed any, you know, the finance thing?
I mean, if we could consider this.
We still have some out here to step.
Yeah, this wouldn't, and I think doesn't apply to that. It's either going to be capital outlay to use some L. N. T. C. F. funds. And so which one are you looking to put in your grant? With those two machines, because that makes a difference. There's thirty-five hundred dollars difference.
We want something that they're recommending, the big ones.
Something sustainable, yeah.
That would be my thought. I don't want, if somebody else has been in here, I don't want.
No, I mean, the, the preferred machine is the larger one, but we can certainly drop back because I know you're trying to look out your budget right now.
Yeah, and then did you visit with Road and Bridge? Because you said their machine's just a little smaller than the small one that's in there.
She said it's the same.
Did you ask them by chance how theirs is working for them? And is it adequate or not?
They are not using it to probably, you know, two hundred and fifty hours a year. So they, it was broken, and Dan was able to fix it. And so he's done all of the in-house things. They use it mostly for easements along the roads for cutting the smaller
What he's asking is, is Dan's happy with how it performs?
It'll take up to about a nine or ten-inch log.
Yeah.
But that's firewood size, so you're not, even if you had this big machine, if you're, if you're cutting firewood, you're down to stuff about this size that you're feeding in that machine. So I'm going to say you probably haven't talked to them to, to see about their machine too much.
Well, I talked to both Dan and Vince, and it's adequate for them. What I anticipate is we're going to have those big bunches of slash. And those are sometimes bigger than the, the small roller. And so then you're kind of, you know, cramming those big bunches in there.
Well, once it grabs it, it feeds itself. Again, you, you start with the small end of it.
The amount.
You know, you start with this, the branch, not with the, the bush.
Right.
So, but just, well, it is a point. If all the logs are going to be cut up in the firewood, you're, all you're putting in is, is the branches, is the, your slash.
Guess the question is, can it take more slash than the little?
But you put, you put one or the other in your grant, is that correct?
I'm waiting on whether I get approval to finish the write-up, so.
So
It's either we put thirty-five in, or we put fifty in, or, I mean, that's kind of what it comes down to.
By fifteen thousand dollars difference.
The, the check, the difference for us is fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand difference. If all Vince
What size is the one that Canyon Reynolds got? Do you know?
I don't know. They make a, the nine hundred is the old one thousand version. They have a twelve hundred version that's older, and they have a fifteen hundred now. The nine hundred, you know, they did have to have a repair of it.
You know what that was by change?
No, Dan did it all in-house.
Yeah.
So it was apparently broken for some time. And so he can do, Vince was happy to say he could do the maintenance for, you know, at least the oil changes and the belt checks and all that.
Yeah, they make a bunch of different models. And there's one to eleven different ones here, one just seen on the website.
Yeah, Dan, Bill Canyon, you hear me okay? How much, uh, I wanted to get an opinion, uh, about an, uh, O E M order and talking about, uh, chiller. And, uh, the difference in the price is, uh, the five thousand budget. The thirty-nine part, but fifteen thousand dollars difference, uh, on the grant side. The big one, you mentioned, you got most of the slash, big one, more of the, you got a slash, so it's. Right. That's what she says, but it's got a small amount.
Yeah, a lot more knives.
Five to a hundred.
What's that?
Got a lot more knives, something fifteen hundred.
Yeah.
Twelve compared to two. That is the difference.
More to sharpen it.
And there's a, the bigger one, uh, you get more range through it, it's in the, I don't know, the sink. Oh, I see. Yeah, I know, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm British Columbia.
Did you put in the wrong zip code? And the last one, you put the zip code on that site.
Okay, that, that makes sense. Thanks, Dan. Bye-bye. Good, Dan, that was Dan. He said, look, Dan, they have an, like you said, the old model. He says, as far as doing branches that does everything, the, 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 the one difference in his mind was, if you're gonna do a lot of it in a long time, the commercial will bigger and it'll probably be better from a maintenance point of view and longevity.
I just did a comparison from the B C one thousand, or kind of what we have, to the B C fifteen hundred. And it's got twelve knives compared to two.
That's a lot of them.
You'd probably just continue.
Or you have to sharpen it, right?
That's what it is.
So for fifteen thousand, it's probably, might be worth it, I guess, in a long time.
Might be. Are you guys thinking diesel on, on it as well?
Yeah, Kerman's.
Yeah, that's a, that'll be, uh, one, uh, a long time.
Yeah, it should.
It's, the horsepower's a lot different and then your fuel tank capacity's doubled.
And they said from what Roden Bridge does, it's not a big, they don't do enough of it. It's the sporadic stuff. See, that's why this is adequate for them. Very good.
Yeah, oh, you said they do all the county road.
No, I know, but that's not.
But it's not hours and hours and hours, the same place.
No, the, the other thing that we could always do is, is we've got a machine for Roden Bridge to rent to, to backfill some money into expanding our mitigation grant.
That's right.
Within itself. So be a nice way for you guys to be able to make the repairs on that machine, fuel that machine, because that fuel's gotta come from somewhere, right?
Yeah.
Um, county's not providing the fuel, I don't think. So if you loan that out to Red Bridge and rented it at a, at a decent rate, when they need to use it or they go, hey, we, we got a lot to do and they can run two machines at the same time, it's, it's a way that, that may be, yeah.
Yeah, and we thought about, you know, the possible cost recovery for the neighborhood too, to cover the cost of the fuel and, you know, part of the maintenance. Um, because if it's five hundred dollars to rent it, plus it's a house, so they'll run and get it.
Let's open the door to other things. Other counties I've seen, well, a slash pile and then they, and people are allowed to come in and take it for free. But it gets the trash out, like, out of the silver, but, uh, a lot of trees falling down. But then you gather, you park them there.
Yeah.
Come to get it for the garden.
Let, let the town use it one day to do up all those slash.
Well, yeah, we've thought a couple, a couple other options and possibilities too. U S Forest Service came to us and asked us if we could find a slash place in town. Um, and Kevin, you might, you might remember this, but a couple years ago, I think they did a, a area behind Roden Bridge. Yeah, and so they, you know.
Roden Bridge and Wetmore has taken some, but I don't believe they have up here. It, it's been at the landfill up here.
Yeah.
But it's actually more beneficial for Roden Bridge, uh, where some of those, uh, where even some of the homeowners are mitigating their property and then they'll put them on, in the right of way and then they'll come along and they'll chip them in place right there. Which saves them loading them up and hauling to Roden Bridge and then Roden Bridge having to pull them out of that pile because then after you stack them a couple times, everything's harder to work with.
It's all.
So, uh, yeah, it would, yeah.
And the other thing I thought about is a possibility of maybe having a free, uh, day at the landfill, just a slash day in summer.
So, right now, the Forest Service, the only collection point, the closest collection point is on Highway seventy-eight, one mile in there to seventy-eight Fifth.
And that's twice the summer, actually. Last year was three months, but this year was July and.
Fifteen, twenty-five, um, almost a thirty mile, one-way trip for people to take their slash.
And whether or not we get people from public, I hope someone with that last year. Still another option.
Yeah.
And it might be get, you know, more staffed up again next summer.
But if you were doing subdivisions and they did the, they had the mitigation work done already and the slash not scattered for ten miles, so they had a, a collection point in their subdivision, then you could go and in a day's time, take care of a week's worth of cutting.
Yeah, and then leave the chips there and then they can come get them if they wanted to.
Yeah.
So.
You gotta constrain them too. Some people bring them in plastic bag and they grind them in plastic and even though they're wool.
Yeah, that's one thing for the piles is you have to make sure there isn't trash and that they're all aligned in the right. Yeah, that's what I did last year with the, the slash collection size. Toilet paper's all.
Okay, so do you have time to do this grant or not?
Yes, I will get it done by five o'clock tomorrow. Um, we'll need a letter of support.
You got a letter written up?
Um, I can get one as soon as we have the number.
You got a sample sometimes and powerful.
Um, yeah, I don't know, but it, I think it's more important it's there. But, uh, I think they'll, they'd be excited to, to see that we can, you know, provide this service to the community.
Tracking management reporting of said grant.
My experience with the Colorado, um, grant so far is that we have a quarterly report. It comes to us on the Google form. I got one yesterday. It took me five minutes to complete. So, um, pretty good, um, short reports. And then it's on us, um, for that, you know, request, so we just have to submit all this stuff. And this is kind of a one-time thing, so we can anticipate much.
Okay. So you don't have any issues making that?
Nope, once, once we figure out, um, you know, it sounds like we're leaning towards the larger one and then I can take off that maintenance. And then, yeah, we got the discount on there and then, um, we may want to buy an extra set of blades because if we have to take them off, they have to be sent away to be sharpened. So if we got a blade, go bad. So I might just get that quote this afternoon and add that to it. Since you don't want to be out of pocket.
And then, all right, so they can't be sharpened by a sharpening service locally?
According to Dan, the closest one is in Pueblo. They send it off, you can also send it to the dealer.
So then they send it out, I know that, but I deal with that. On blades on the mold.
Okay.
Yeah, probably goes to their headquarters.
Fair enough.
Okay, I'll, I'll move that we, uh, go ahead with this and I would move to get the, or they get five thousand and ten, you know.
B C fifteen.
Do you have a motion to have a second?
I'll second. Where do we want to take this one from?
I like the lack of.
More than T C F?
Okay. Uh, another question would be, who's going to, uh, come up with the letter? To be signed.
Yeah, who, who signs it?
We'll just make it for, I don't know, we can make all three of us on the signature, maybe. Or if it's a journey, then that.
So if you get that to me here, that's gonna be in tomorrow.
Tomorrow at five, so we're gonna be here.
Yeah, we'll be here tomorrow, so if you can get it to me tomorrow or us tomorrow.
Okay, well, try and not get misspelled.
If we approve this.
He's got lots of, you know, high, we're gonna need, we'd be high cost, it is to.
Any claim?
Oh, okay.
Any further here at the table?
Anyway.
Any further discussion?
No.
Um, so do we need just half of it? And they're gonna, grant's gonna cover the other half and then we go out and buy it? So they'll, is that reimbursement or are they gonna just hand us stuff?
Reimbursement.
So we have to spend a whole hundred?
I don't know the timeframe on that reimbursement.
Anything else? Okay, public comment? Seeing none. Uh, those in favor of moving forward with the grant request, uh, for the purchase of the mayor at the fifteenth? Yeah. With the county match being fifty thousand dollars, uh, providing the full upfront cost for, and a fifty percent reimbursement. Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. My motion carries.
Thank you so.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay.
And just to clarify, this won't be the first event, uh, that I'll present to you this month. I've got a couple others going on. So I'll have the M O U for the, um, O E M and Rescue Ranch. I'm not sure who needs to be on that. Do you guys need, all of you to sign the M O U? Who, who fills it, you?
Depends on what we have done.
I think we all sign the M O Us.
Okay. We'll get all your names on that, so your next meeting.
Yeah, and we need to get something in place there anyway because all those trees ended up out there because that was not foreseen before that, uh, training took place. That was a last-minute thing, if I'm not mistaken.
Somewhat, we've been talking about it, yes.
So, well, there's, they didn't know they were coming until all of a sudden they needed to go somewhere. So, uh, and they're.
They could go on the mesa.
And they're there now and we haven't got, they've been there for about a month and we haven't got an agreement with them. So I think we need to get something in place there anyway.
Yeah, I have the M O U draft, um, and we added a couple things yea- yesterday. Um, but it would be ready once we get all three of your names on it, so.
So, yeah, so, uh.
I probably need to run it by Dan.
Yeah, probably need to run it by Dan.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would, they're, uh, Christie and Rescue Ranch probably need to be involved in the formulation so we all know what we're gonna be agreeing to as well.
So you want her to.
I, I would, I don't want to have us singularly formulate an M O U and then give it to them, so here you go.
We've been working together on it, back and forth.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, to, to make sure that.
Because they wanted us to supervise all the volunteers and I'm like, uh, no. That needs to be shared responsibility.
But at the same point, at the same time, they're probably worried because everything's happening on their place. So they have a liability issue as well, so that's probably why. Uh, so that all needs to be part of that discussion for the M O U.
Yes, the M O U would then drive them, uh, making that application to Green Alliance and, um, that firewood bank.
Okay. Good enough then, as long as everybody's in the loop.
Yep, and then the next regular meeting is the twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
It'll be through.
No, well, sixteen.
Sixteenth and Wetmore.
Sixteenth and Wetmore, okay. So I'll see if I can bring stuff there and get it out in advance to you on other.
If you can wait till the twenty-fourth, I'd rather you wait till then.
Okay.
Um, but almost been a bunch of our departments running and coming down to the wetmore and, so.
Okay.
Doesn't make sense to waste the time.
Yeah.
So the next one would be the Thursday. Yeah, yeah, there's, that meeting's before, but there's other departments that are breaking down.
Okay. Well, I have one deadline that's the twenty-second and one deadline that's the first of November, so.
When did you say this grant came out?
On the sixth of September, we got it, yeah. And the C W D G grant just came out and I haven't even looked at that at all, so.
Good mind.
Yeah, I know there, some of them were short turnarounds, but we need to, we need to start. And I'm talking to you now because you're sitting in the chair. Um, my, what I'm voicing is for everyone that comes to us with grants because so many times we have grant requests that are due today or tomorrow that come to us and then all of a sudden we, it's an emergency when, no, it isn't an emergency. We need to have this stuff turned around. Even if it is a short turnaround, it needs to be done before the day before it happens. Uh, because we had to call a special meeting for this.
I know, appreciate that, thank you.
And so my point for everyone, and I'm just, you know, you're just happen to be the one that's here right now, is that we need to start trying to do better on that so that it is not a last-minute thing, uh, to put in these grant requests. Some of them I know that you get them in the, you got a week to get them done. Those are, but even this one here was a month. So, uh, you know, that's my point.
Two, two, you said twenty-seven, seven.
Yeah, that's when I got it. It may have come out earlier than that.
Yeah.
But, you know, you have to check websites and sometimes somebody emails it to you.
Well, it's a good point.
You know, but, yeah, I'm.
But if we could just be cognizant of that and to try to make, make them to where they're not emergent, right?
Yes.
Not to shake that, thank you. Anything else? Public comment? Seeing none. This, uh, meeting is adjourned at two sixteen P M.
I'll get an application. Kevin, have you still got that? Thank you. What is it on here?